The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with in that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least forty-eight hours in advance. On May twenty-third, 2017, notices mailed to the Courier-Post and the Philadelphia Inquirer. Roll call, please.
Teresa Atwood. Captain Blackshear. Jose Brito Bueno. Dorothy Burley. Taisha Minir. Minister Wassim Muhammad.
Present.
Felicia Reyes Morton. Martha Wilson.
Present.
We have a call.
At this time, I will ask you to stand with me and do a pledge allegiance to the flag. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent, I'm sorry, to our counsel.
At this time, the board is going to go into closed session to discuss matters of individual privacy, personnel, and matters covered by attorney-client privilege. At this time, I call for a motion to go into closed session. Okay, motion to go into closed made by, okay, Ms. Atwood and seconded by Ms. Burley. We are now in closed session. We will return at six-ten. At this time, I call for a motion to come out of close.
Motion to come out of close.
Second.
Can I roll call? Jose Brito Bueno. Dorothy Burley. Taisha Minir. Wassim Muhammad.
Yes.
Felicia Reyes Morton. Martha Wilson. Captain Blackshear. We are at a close.
All right, I'm going to come down and do the superintendent's presentation, so if our board members could grab the first row. All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I want to begin by getting into some updates with our first day of school planning. That's that acronym you see up there, the AFDOS Planning, and just wanted to thank not only the people you see in these pictures, but so many others in our central office and, most of all, inside of our schools who are doing the hard work. And I've had the opportunity to go building to building, haven't been to every single one yet, and can see all the hard work underway. And so, huge thanks to our facilities team, to our principals, to all of our staff, teachers especially, who I know have been, a great many number of them have been volunteering their time to get ready and unpack boxes, in some cases, given the Camden High transition. On that note, I wanted to give you all a staffing update. I know around this time of the year, there are always a lot of questions around vacancies, and so I just want to put all that information out there. So these numbers were changing even up until an hour before, a couple hours before this board meeting, and they're changing and moving in the right direction, going down. And so, right now, we have fifteen anticipated vacancies to start the school year, in which we would have to use substitutes to fill, and nine teachers on confirmed leaves of absence. And so, that is obviously a teacher going out, whether on medical leave, maternity leave, whatever the case may be, and that would obviously require us to also utilize a substitute teacher. And so, when you think about the total number of teaching positions we have, which is seven-hundred-and-eighty-four, fifteen, which is the actual anticipated vacancies, represents less than two percent of all of our positions. We'd love for that number certainly to be zero. We had a lot of late separations from the district, so individuals who, even in the last few days, have notified us that they would be leaving the district. They're not in big numbers, but it still leaves us in a position where we have to fill some of those vacancies with substitutes. If you go back and look at our board meetings from years past, whether in my presentation or just in information that we shared publicly, that number has gone down each and every year. And so, that number, that's on public record, both as a total volume and also as a percentage of our teaching positions, has gone down each and every year, and pretty dramatically so when you go back to some of the peak years. So grateful to our team, Division of Talent Labor Relations, Shannon, Latisha, Emily Nielsen, and a whole host of others who help interview candidates and vet candidates, because it's a lot of hard work to ensure we have talented educators certified, gone through their paperwork, and situated and ready for our kids for the first day of school. So I mentioned the building moves a little bit earlier, and I just wanted to, again, reiterate all of the incredible work that went into ensuring Camden High is set up in Hatch. I was there earlier today, and I see some other folks now, too, I know were also there for their welcome-back barbecue, and to see how far that building has come in just the last few weeks is incredible. And so, huge thanks to anyone in this room who played a role there. Big Picture Learning Academy is being set up in Hatch Annex, and that space also looks like it's going to be in great shape for the first day of school. The high school for Big Picture, as you know, will be in the Boys and Girls Club, and so that building being in pretty good condition to begin with, and all of those boxes being unpacked at this point. Also wanted to just call out that there are three new buildings, which will be opening up their doors, I think you all know this, with Mastery on State River, Kip with Whittier, which is not a new building, it's a renovation. They just had a backpack event earlier today, I believe it was earlier today, and Uncommon with their new site on Hatch and in Coopwood. All right, so we have a couple welcome-back videos we wanted to share with you all to give you a flavor of what educators and staff inside of the schools are showing our students and parents. And so, we worked with our principals, in the central office, we worked with our principals to put together these two videos. I'm going to have VGuard pull them up for you, and big thanks to VGuard who helped pull them together.
Greetings. My name is Alex Jones, and I am proud to serve as the principal of Camden High School. Today, I stand here in front of the historic Hatch Building, which will serve as the temporary home of the Castle on the Hill. I'm excited to be joined today by our leadership team, who returns together for a second year to serve our students and their families. Our family operation coordinator, Ms. Mia Anderson-Coles, our lead educator, Ms. Pia Garbett, our operations manager, Mr. Michael Avery, and our dean of students, Mr. David McKee. Together, we want you to know that we are still here, and we are excited to serve the Parkside community, and we cannot wait to see our students and their family for the
Hi, my name is Larry James, and I have the privilege of serving as the new school leader at Woodrow Wilson High School. This building is home to an incredible amount of heritage, history, and potential. I promise to work hard to build a school culture that supports our students and staff to live up to that potential. During my career, working as an English educator, bilingual school counselor, and assistant principal, I learned that supporting student success means setting high academic and behavioral expectations, implementing best practices in the classroom, and creating a culture of inclusion and respect for all. I will bring the same values to Woodrow Wilson High School and to the East Camden community, where I plan to work tirelessly to raise student achievement, creating a welcoming environment for all learners, and foster a passion, pride, in students and staff. I look forward to meeting you all very soon. If you want to get in touch with me, my contact information can be found at the bottom of the screen. Thank you for your dedication to Woodrow Wilson and for helping me make this school year a great year to be a tiger.
All right, thank you again, VGuard. Shifting gears here a little bit, for school uniforms as we get ready for the first day of school, I wanted to just let you all know, that's a question that comes up very often. In fact, a parent came up to me today at Camden High Hatch, asking about uniform vouchers. And so, the budget that we're using for uniform vouchers, on a per-student basis, has actually gone up from last year to this year. In addition to that, Ilan Drennan, who leads a number of different initiatives for us, all related to social-emotional learning and discipline policies, she was able to get a donation from, I believe, Teach for America, for one thousand and six uniforms. So we just got free uniforms on hand in the central office. And so, just as an FYI for families who may be reaching out to you all for vouchers for uniforms, we have an additional pile in the central office, which we'll also be utilizing to hand out to students and families. All right, I am going to welcome up our deputy superintendent Katrina McCombs to give you all some updates on summer school, or to share out what happened over the summer at summer school.
Thank you very much. This year, as well as every other year, we are forging ahead to ensure that we are providing the most inclusive environments for our school, our students in our schools, and that doesn't end during the school year, but this year, we extended that into the summer as well. So, as you can see on the screen, there are many different beautiful smiling faces of students who had the opportunity to enjoy our summer programs this year. They had a wonderful time. When I was able to view the closing program and some of the other pieces, they were thoroughly enjoying themselves. So just a few highlights. This year, we had our first K-8 Unified Summer Program, and "unified" speaks to the fact that our gen ed, special ed, and bilingual students were together for the first time. Not only were they together and housed in a building together, but they interacted with one another. Oh, I'm just kidding, thank you, thank you. Is that better? A little bit better? Thank you. You scared me there, Mr. Brown. Not only were they together, but they were also engaged in learning experiences and were able to just support one another as peers in learning, regardless of whether they were bilingual, gen ed, or had special needs. So during the day, classes joined together across programs during the summer, engaged in academic activities. For example, one activity included fourth-grade students, and they were practicing making influences together by participating in a scavenger hunt. So the program, the activities were very hands-on, very fun, very interactive, but they were grounded in lessons that were going to help to reduce summer slide. The end of the summer was capped off with a showcase, including all students, and in addition, in addition to the District Run Program, which is very important to note, there were several other citywide programs running in district buildings this summer. Some of those included weekends. There was a Promise Neighborhood Funding Program in partnership with the YMCA. That particular program, thanks to the grant funds from the Promise Neighborhood Grant, will continue as an after-school program throughout the school year. So this was a very rich year for our students across our summer programs. Just to highlight our summer credit recovery programming, which is on the next slide. We served approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five, oh, thank you, thank you, we served approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five sixth through twelfth grade students. Of those two, and serving those two-hundred-and-twenty-five students, it's important to note that three-hundred-and-seventy-three classes were scheduled in Odyssey Ware for students in grades sixth through twelve. In addition to roughly twenty-five students taking physical education, so there were numerous course offerings that our platform allowed students to participate in. And out of that number, seventy percent of students enrolled passed their assigned courses. So in addition to just enrolling in that number of courses, seventy percent were able to pass those courses. And finally, across all grades, the weekly average attendance was eighty percent. So that is up, and we were very excited. The students were engaged, parents were involved, and we believe that housing our programs in a consolidated way and providing transportation was one of the, one of the other factors that contributed to a steady attendance flow. And as we move forward to the next slide with summer programming, we also offered SWAG, which is the opportunity for our students to be employed and to earn money while also supporting the district in preparing for the new year. So this year, approximately fifty students worked with the operation managers in each of our buildings and teams in order to prepare our schools for the new school year. So our students worked hand-in-hand and were able to work on different projects so that we are ready and that they feel that they are a part of our school year. So those are just some of the highlights of the program. If you want to talk to me about any other details, happy to stick around afterwards to do so. Thank you. And thanks for clicking for me.
All right, we had one new, excuse me, two new positions for this upcoming school year we were hiring for over the last several months, and you may remember this from previous board updates, the climate and culture coordinator position, and then the behavioral specialist position. For climate and culture coordinator, the idea here is to build off of the success we've seen with our deans of culture and climate in our high schools to help enhance culture and climate inside of our high schools and really create positive incentives for good behavior, create incentives for positive behavior for our students, and to really get suspension numbers lower and work more collaboratively with our kids. And with the coordinator position, that is more focused on the family schools. And so, we hired seven individuals, four of whom were security officers in the district. And with the behavioral specialist position, that is more geared toward building capacity at the family school level for those schools receiving the behavioral specialist position to help ensure that those students who do exhibit challenging behaviors, the teachers are trained and supported in order to best support those kids. And so, that individual inside of those respective schools will provide targeted professional development to the school staff to address that work. And just to close out with some district highlights, so our suspension rates, which we've discussed here in board meetings before, just had a more formal announcement, have gone down by over fifty percent. And, you know, that's an incredible outcome that is the byproduct of, really, two years of work that is led by Maggie Sorby, Ilan Drennan, and certainly a whole host of others who are providing PV, providing supports within our school support team, of course. Our school leaders get a whole, a great deal of credit. And really, those inside of our school buildings, especially in our high schools, the deans of culture and climate, so I mentioned that position just a few minutes ago, those individuals, David McKee, Nairi Umitri, and Preston Brown, who, in our high schools alone, there was an eighty-nine percent reduction in suspensions, which is just a staggering figure. So there's still a lot of work to do to ensure our students are supported, to ensure that there are still consequences for students, but that those consequences are not always reflexively leading us to suspend kids and take them out of school. And a number that I know Ilan and many others are very proud of is that this past year, we had six-thousand-six-hundred-forty-two more days of learning for district students because they were not suspended outside of school, and that's, that's an incredible Thank you, Mr. Brown. The Donors Choose matching grant continues. I think this is the second or third consecutive year, thanks to the generosity of Townsend Press. They are providing us a hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar matching grant for Camden educators. And so, teachers who sponsor projects up to a thousand dollars will get up to five-hundred dollars in matching funds. And so, we really encourage all Camden teachers to put their projects up on Donors Choose. What I generally hear from teachers is, pretty much whatever they put up gets funded. And so, really, the sooner they act, the more likely they are to get funded. It's, it's an incredible resource. And so, if there are certain limitations in terms of our procurement processes or school-based budgets, this is just an awesome way to get extra items for your classroom. And one example would be the calming room in Yorkshire, which was highlighted in our restored practices press conferences the other day. Most everything in the calming room, from like the tent, some of the furniture, was, was paid for, was paid for by Donors Choose. Pre-K recruitment, just wanted to let you all know that there are still some seats available through the city for free pre-K, so any child who turns three or four before October the first is eligible, and we just wanted to make sure that all of our families are aware. And this year's recruitment drive has already registered about two thousand students, and we hope to fill every single seat. And registration flyers are available at the sign-in table here, and registration information is also available on our website. I want to give a big shout-out to Katrina, Anna, Dr. Fletcher, Andrew, and many others who helped throw our Summer School Leader Institute. So these are some pictures here, and we had three full weeks of leadership training, development, and skill-building as a group, and it was an awesome event, and thanks again to those folks. I mentioned the website a minute ago. Some of you all may have seen this, but we have a new website. We think it's a lot easier to navigate. It's also mobile-friendly, whereas the previous website, it was really hard to access on your phone. And the district, on top of all of that, will save over ten thousand dollars a year with this new website, so it's just kind of a win all around. And we'll also acknowledge that, given a transition to a website, to a new website, there are always going to be some kinks that we're trying to work out, and our goal is that it is a hundred percent accurate and operational before the first day of school. There's still a few things we're working through, but for the most part, it is functioning Give a shout-out to the Sharp School Community. I see Ms. Ruiz here in the room, and they have, they held an awesome series, and I don't know how long it lasted, but I know for at least several days, they welcomed their parents and community members in to help volunteer. She put them to work, she put me to work, painting, painting the wall over here, and it was just awesome to see the, the school community come together to beautify the building. Speaking of which, big shout-out also goes to the Woodrow Wilson School Community. Some of you all may know that the entrance, there hasn't always been a whole lot of work done to that garden up front. There have been kind of different fits and starts, and now with Principal James, a group came together and said, "We're going to, we're going to do something different, do something bigger." And these are some pictures from, from that beautification effort, and it's a, it's really beautiful. So the bottom right kind of shows where, where it ended up, and really grateful to those who helped pull it together. The day before this came together, there was a service day at Woodrow Wilson, and a number of our central office staff volunteered. I think the building was probably built with a hundred people just moving boxes, trying to get the building ready, and again, a lot of our folks, I know, were there volunteering. Bunch of different back-to-school events, and I don't think I'm even going to be able to reel off all of them. I just generally wanted to acknowledge that there were a couple that happened this past weekend and more that are coming up through this week. So these are some pictures from events at North Camden Waterfront Park this past weekend and Stanley Park, where over two-hundred families pledged to have perfect attendance this year. So this is a drive from our family engagement team to ensure that our kids are shown up to school every day, and so we had two-hundred families and students pledged to have perfect attendance this year. And thank you to our very own board member, Taisha Minir, who raffled free back-to-school haircuts to those students who signed the perfect attendance pledge. And that concludes the superintendent's update. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Superintendent, at this time, I present for your approval of business office agenda
All right, in accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent under Title 18A, I hereby approve today's superintendent's agenda items and business
At this time, I read the rules for public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on the agenda items in this meeting. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes. You will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning immediately or immediately in your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or in your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or his designated will address your questions to the extent provided by law. First we have is Keith Benson.
I've been coming to these board meetings for quite some time and presenting my concerns as a public school educator, a resident, and public school parent. Tonight, I'm in a slightly different capacity. I am now president of Camden Education Association. And it is my duty to faithfully represent and communicate the concerns of our CEA members, our students, and the communities we serve. So with respect to that three-minute time limit, it's safe to say I'm going to be here a little while. In that I was elected to this position, I am always mindful of what I say and what I do pursuant to public education in Camden, because it can potentially reflect upon and impact my entire CEA family. So in being more presidential, I'm not going to raise my voice, I'm not going to scream and yell, I'm just going to convey the facts as I know them, and that our public school children in Camden are being short-changed in their education by this district leadership. District leadership is hanging our students out to dry and our schools out to dry. Why? To fake-proof and to fake-make the case that the takeover schools and the charters are better, and to justify the closing of our public schools. If you did not catch what I just said, I'll say it more, even more explicitly. Our district leadership is sabotaging our students and our schools' progress in order to grow the takeover schools. We all know, because I've seen the documents myself, and I can send them to anyone who wants to, wants to see them, that these takeover schools were already promised a certain amount of schools and a certain amount of students. Come hell or high water, this district leadership will try to make sure they get our kids one way or the other. If you want specifics or to see the documents, let me know, and I will send them to you. As I'm talking, I love to know what my neighbor Minister Muhammad, Ms. Wilson, who I, in fact, voted for a few years ago, as well as board members Brito Bueno, Burley, Minir, and Atwood are thinking when I explain that for the past three years, our schools have started the school year with numerous vacancies across the district, that, that go nearly the entire year unfilled. That is to say, many of our students in our schools go near the entire school year with substitute teachers who are shuffled about throughout the year, and this even includes the testing subjects. At Camden High last year, our students went the majority of the year without a certified math, science, and special needs teachers, but instead will babysit by source for teachers, and I mean babysit. At Big Picture, students went nearly, nearly the entire year without a certified math and English teacher, and this is a high school. I bet you never, never hear that in the media when our leadership talks about our test scores, that they never appropriately staffed our schools to begin with, and that, that news never makes it in the print or these slideshows. Board members, is this acceptable to you? Our students have not had, our students not having teachers all year, is this news to you? Would this be acceptable to you if your children were experiencing this? You have all just been informed as to what has been a widespread issue in our district for the majority of the last year, and in response to that reality, in response to that fact, at the end of the year, our district let go nearly eighty educators. So this district went from not having enough educators for the bulk of last year and relying on substitutes, to then laying off some more educators. So for next year coming met, despite what you all saw or heard, Big Picture still needs a math teacher, which is a testing subject. Sharp needs a Spanish teacher, needs pre-K, needs more paraprofessionals, needs more clerks and security. Creative Arts needs clerks, needs guidance counselors, needs security, needs custodians. HB Wilson needs a first-grade teacher, clerks, custodians, security, two guidance counselors. Davis needs a kindergarten teacher, a first-grade teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, a special area teacher, and a Spanish teacher. Camden High School needs four special education teachers, an algebra teacher, a physics teacher, an English teacher, a biology teacher, a language teacher, a clerk, more security, and more paraprofessionals. Now, this represents just a quarter of our schools. How did I come to find this information? I simply picked up the phone and asked the principals, operation manager and LEs what vacancies still need to be filled. This information was not hard to get. Anyone, anyone who truly gave a darn about our kids' education.
Keith Benson, your time is up.
Sorry about that. Would have found that our schools, what our schools are missing, and would have provided that. That is our school district's legal obligation, to providing of a thorough and efficient education. The reality is simply begging for a lawsuit to be brought by parents and groups like the NAACP, the Education Law Center, and the ACLU. Additionally, as I read- Additionally, as I wrap up, every school I spoke to except for one said they needed, not wanted, but needed more clerks and more security. Whole entire buildings and all the offices that have them have just one clerk. And that seems strange considering our superintendent throughout his tenure had his own secretary, a special assistant, and a chief of staff. That whole schools have just one clerk makes no sense. I'm trying. And knowing makes a building operate more effectively. Clerks do so much, and while the district tried to sneakily slide clerk duties into the job description of FOCs, every building principal I spoke to said it was wholly insufficient approach, that clerks are a valuable and needed resource in their school to operate effectively. Finally, on the issue of security, I am warning this body, this district leadership, that is opening up to enormous legal liabilities by not having the proper level of security in our buildings. Our children and staff are one tragedy away from someone being seriously hurt, injured, or remaining simply because this district chooses to not hire sufficient security personnel. I want to be clear, every school I spoke to except for one said they needed more security. Even the magnet schools were clear expressing their need for more officers. What district leadership believes they are saving by not employing more officers, this district will pay exponentially more in litigation and damages if someone ends up hurt when it's easily prevented. In closing, I want to be clear to everyone in attendance that our district leadership and human resources department are shortchanging our kids, and that's a fact. This is sabotaged here by the state and again, bribing our children of a thorough and efficient education, which is against the law. I firmly believe this is occurring because district leadership is trying to continue the story that our schools are terrible and thus feed the narrative that the takeover schools are quote-unquote "better choices." I'm done for now, but next month, we're going to discuss Sumner, we're going to discuss Camden enrollment, and all this sort of question with things and associations our district has been doing at Two-O-One Front Street. For the record, everything I said is true and is verifiable. If you guys want to see more, just ask me, I'll give it to you.
Ms. Viner.
Good evening, welcome back, advisory board members, superintendent. I'd like to start off, I have a good attitude too. Once again, want to remind you that you do not chair the meeting. As an attorney, you do not chair meetings. You have no right to cut anyone off.
Please address your comments to the board president.
I am addressing my comments to the gentleman that's opening his mouth right now, that would be you. Now, I would like to say, I started off just like to say about Camden High School. I told you guys last year that we're going to drop a lawsuit on you. You're not tearing it down. Drop! The lawsuit got dropped. The community does not want our school taken down. Don't give us no crap about what the students want. The alumni does not want the school taken down. We want that building and we will have it. I'm trying. I want to say to you that you have Alex Jones as the lead educator in Camden High School. I was over there today. I spoke to you, Mr. Mohammed, about this man's programs and stuff that he implicates. Black and racism. Now, he had a little system here where he got a green card, a purple card, and a gold card as incentives. Did he think about the ESL and special needs school students, where they're going to get a black card coming through the door? That is discriminatory. He also said that there will be no bathroom passes the first 10 minutes. We have females. You don't know when they got to go. You have no right to put a time limit or say when someone can use the bathroom. We are not a charter network. We are a public school system, and we do not implicate these charter policies in our school. Now, I am really mad, Camden High is my alma mater, I'm going to call for the removal of that man. Not only is he not certified to do the job, he has no prior history, was he Teach for America, and now you done got rid of Mr. Shaplin. I'm clapping because he didn't advocate for our children and statement our school. He had to go too, and his wife is on the charter school network. Ms. Viner, do an investigation. So why wouldn't he fight? We are tired of having people that look like us in our community that don't care about our children. Now, I want to talk to you guys about Unity Day. I don't know if any of yous are community-wise, because I sit and look at the people up there, you don't come out and do nothing. But in Unity Day, instead of Unity Day this year, we had problems with Bloods and Crips. And when I looked around and seen 300 to 400 Bloods and Crips that are murderers in Camden, these high school children are running around killing people, they were our students. Charter, public, parochial, they were our children. Down to the Sloan L. over there says some of them kids, "You know that little boy telling us, 'Are you a cop?'" He said, "No." He said, "We kill people like you." They posited up at Unity Day and destroyed the whole Unity Day, but these are our children. But yet still, we have nothing related to any kind of task force that's going to deal with these issues and stop the murders in our community. But you say you love the kids. Well, let me give this advisory board notice. If we don't have a program implicated soon, I'm going to start raising hell. Our children are dying at an alarming rate on the streets of Camden. How many bodies have you seen laying on the ground? Because I've seen enough in my community.
Your comments, your time is up.
Okay, my time is up, and yours is going to be up too. You threatened me again, you're not hosting this meeting. But I want to say one more thing.
Ms. Viner, he's just a time-
Okay, I want to say one more thing. Can you keep the time? I would feel a lot better if-
You shouldn't come after him like that, that's not appropriate.
He can't keep listening. To me, he's chairing the meeting. Let Ms. Wilson tell me to shut up, I'll shut up quick. She's community, I respect her.
Ms. Viner, your time is up. Can you please wrap that up?
Yes, I want to wrap it up. I want to say to you, I noticed that when you came to Camden High, you had memorabilia with that. With purple and gold, I'm wrong, right? I got some memorabilia I want to show you. Get ready to put me out. Because Camden High will never die. I believe purple and gold. We have a whole resistance, and we will continue to sue until we get that built. We will not let an advisory board not selected by the people determine who has our school. Now, if you want to put me out, I'll let me tell everybody to put me out. But Camden High will never die.
Ms. Barfield.
Guess for me, as a parent, this is like another year of hope. And it doesn't take long for me to kind of just go through this thought process that here we go again, another school year. You know, it's like, again, listening to the new CEA president and some of the people in the community, this is what I see. As a parent already, I'm seeing the issues that we're going to have. So again, I guess my concern again is in reference to staffing in our district. You know, again, who's going to clean the buildings? We don't have enough people to clean the buildings. When it comes to security, you know, how are we going to deal with this shortage in staff? And then knowing, because that information is not being put to the public, and reference to some of our schools have a budget cut of 40%. That's not being talked about. That's not being shown to the community. So how do you operate a school that basically has the same enrollment of the previous year and you cut the budget 40%? No one's talking about that. So I think, again, what has been said again tonight is just like this term they use, cognitive dissonance. You know, cognitive dissonance, I'm quite sure you educated, y'all understand that psychology. And the sad part is, yes, the superintendent has lulled us to sleep with these presentations at the beginning of our meetings. Yeah, it's that feel-good, we hope this is what takes place, but when the numbers and the individual who has insight, who comes up and has the ability at the time to research what's truly happening in our schools, we see again that we're being misled. We're being misled because, yes, we all hope and dream of a better education system and community, but we know the charter schools and Renaissance is not the answer. We know statistics says this all throughout the United States, that they are for-profit businesses, corporations, multi-corporations that are coming in that's taking over school budgets and land and property. That's just a fact of the matter. Educating our children is the last end of it, so again, like Ms. Viner said, when we see that in the community, because if you're not in the community, you don't see all these young kids that have lost hope when it comes to education. So we're going into another year. What does that school environment looks like? Again, I see that you talked about having these new positions, behavior specialists, climate and cultural coordinators, but how do they deal with those individual children that are in the gangs? We need something more than what's being shown again, superintendent. And again, I'm just, you know, really upset that, again, it's like I'm hearing, I'm going to say the same old same old. We're going to go through another year, and we're going to kind of like go around and put out the fires, but again, time will tell. So like I said, you know, I'm always hopeful that we're going to have a better year, I'm always hopeful that our children are going to learn, have access to a better quality education, but the numbers don't reflect that, the budgets don't reflect that. And I'm quite sure, again, just like with leadership and staffing, you cannot have any growth in any school when you're changing building principles every year, when you're constantly changing staff, teachers, that these children build relationships with, and you're constantly changing them year in and year, and there's no consistency. So cognitive dissonance is really, again, is that we need some consistency to really prove and support the fact of what you're saying when you're doing your presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield. Mr. Cal Francis.
Good evening, members of the board. I want to talk to the students tonight, the Camden City students, the high school students, because we are beginning our 15th year of our AXO program, and it's open to, I'm an extended invitation to all high school students, grades nine to 12, to sign up for our academic program this year. We just completed a very successful 14th year in Baltimore. In last month, we had three students who won a total of five gold medals in state competitions, so they qualified to go to the national in Baltimore, so we took them to Baltimore in July last month, and they were successful. Two of the students won national medals. So we have two more national champions from our branch, the Camden County branch, to add to our, the other 11 that we've had in previous years. So, and one of them you know very well, who was a former student representative from creative arts, and he was one of the national champions in instrumental music contemporary. And of course, that was Joshua Sen. And the other national champion was Bayon Teal, who was the daughter of a former Camden school teacher, and she won a national championship in the modern dance. And she was a repeater, by the way. She also won last year, so she repeated again this year. So I want to extend an invitation to all high school students. We're starting recruitment next month, as soon as schools opens for our 15th year, which will, we will have these statewide competitions in April of next year, so they have about five months to prepare. We'll have a lot of mentors assist them with their projects and with their talent category that they choose. So I'm going to put this up so that they can contact us, the Camden County branch and NWACP, AXO, email, camdennwcp2080@aal.com, phone number, area code 856-964-6705. So they're all welcome, any student, grade nine to 12 can apply and participate this year. So, and now that I have a little more time, I'm no longer the president of the branch, we have a new president, I have more time to reach out to the students, visit the schools, and do some recruiting and assist them in coming in onboard in our program. So I talked with Josh the other day, he's now at Cornell University, he's going through his orientation, and he seems to be very, very well-adjusted and very happy with his situation. Oh, there's one other thing. I have to inform you that last month, you were in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, because the meeting was canceled and there was no notice to the public. We did not receive notice in the newspaper until two days after the meeting was canceled. In the Courier-Post, it was, the notice was on the 24th, two days after the meeting, and in the Inquirer, it was on the 25th. So that was three days after the meeting. So that's a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of a cancellation should be done 48 hours before the meeting is scheduled. So I went to Davis School last Tuesday, and of course, there was nobody there. So I took a lot of time out of my schedule to attend the meeting, but there was nobody there. And I didn't find out that the meeting was canceled until two days later, when I read it in the paper, in the Courier-Post, and three days later, when I read it in the Inquirer. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Ms. Monique Braggsdale.
I have quite a few questions and also have a suggestion for superintendent, when you run into these meetings and you want the community to get involved, you should go back to doing the superintendent's report, public portion, and then do the regular meeting, then the public portion. That way, we have a good dialogue with the people and people with these questions to answer before they leave or have to leave, because you got to remember, we are parents, we have homes to take care of. You got five minutes for the superintendent's report, and you got three minutes for the general contractor, and as Martha Wilson also know, that's how we practiced the school board meeting prior. And because, the reason why people go over is because you change those rules. I have a couple of questions. Where and when, where are the vacancies and what schools are the vacancies located? We need to know what subjects are vacant. Also, would need to know from Dr. Combs, she put up that presentation about the after-school program, what schools are offering the after-school programs? And also, this one is also from Ms. Combs. We want to know where you guys are with the gifted and talented program that I asked about last year, New Jersey AC Section 688-3-1, the state mandated program. I'd like to find out more about that, I know we were working on that, I need an update. I also want to update on our curriculum. When you're getting ready for the school, the parents want to know what's the curriculum. Do we have textbooks to match that curriculum? What is going to be offered different from our schools? Camden High, I went to Hatch, you said it looked great. I went beyond the front door and auditorium, and I went all the way in the back and upstairs. It's clutter everywhere. I don't even know how that school's going to be ready before the school starts. And there was swing space money that afforded to that school by the state, the CDA, that should have been afforded to that school and whatever programs you put in Woodrow Wilson. I need a breakdown of what was given to those schools and what was put in place for our kids so that they can have an efficient year and they can have the resources they need to achieve in those schools. Also, the resolutions, I have a question, I'm very confused about this non-public entitlement for security and textbooks for the private schools. I need somebody to break that down for me, I don't understand. I know that private schools, there's probably like a siphon or something for like transportation usually given to the parents. I know somebody was telling me the nursing part, I can understand that, we have a sick child. But as far as security and any books and stuff, we need that for our schools, we shouldn't have to give them more towards their schools. So if you can break that down for us in your resolutions, I know you guys will probably be building on it, but this is information that we need to know. If you want us to help you, help us with our kids and our schools, you have to be more open when, have a dialogue and more descriptive. Some of the stuff that y'all put in there, that big book, I didn't need that big book, but I need to know what is going on with our schools, what is going on with the teachers, what are we doing for the vacancies? I read on July, I missed June too many, but I read on the minutes that you guys approved for someone to go all the way to Puerto Rico to find expanded educators. In Camden County, I'm sure we have people that's probably more than qualified. To me, that's a vacation. Y'all could have sent me, I would have went for them, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Viner. Sarah Johnson.
I had a couple of questions. I wanted to, of course, remind you-
I wanted to, uh, of course remind you that the New Jersey State ESSA plan has been approved. And the next step is what is the local district going to do about ESSA? How is that, how are you engaging the public in the development of the long-term ESSA plan, which is the funding that will be used for a nu- for a broad number of programs within this district? I also, uh, noticed that you accepted tonight's agenda. Um, that did not accept the agenda for the canceled meeting in July. That canceled meeting in July included a resolution that was for the sale of the school administration building. I was told that that was going to have a, a time for public comment. Um, and I, I don't see that that was even mentioned in the superintendent's report. I don't know when the public comment is available about that, uh, that plan to sell the administration building and two ten, uh, Front Street. Um, so, um, I also, um, uh, wanted to thank you, of course, as you're putting in libraries in the, uh, first to fifth grade, uh, classrooms. What is happening about the middle school? Have the hi- will the high schools all have, uh, libraries this year? And what about the library and media specialists? Again, from a curriculum point of view, it's extremely important that our young people learn how to research and write papers. They need to be prepared to go to college. And part of that is researching and understanding the validity of resources as well as how to properly put together a paper. I also am interested in knowing the changes in the curriculum. I have not as yet seen the update for the curriculum, um, hopefully that by next month. There were a number of changes that I, or a number of issues that I pointed out last year. I, uh, have not seen a change that has been posted online. And I'm hoping this year those items will be corrected. So I will be looking for that, uh, specifically in areas of science and social studies that I reviewed last year. I see also that you have a resolution here that is on the temporary use of classroom space at the Rosedale campus that is insufficient in size. I was unclear of why there was a need to use this space. Um, I, I didn't, I didn't know the district's specific need. Are we having, uh, are we having people that are displaced? Are we enrolling the enrollment of our, uh, of our preschools? So it was unclear from why it was written. I understand you're only planning to do this for one year, uh, but I didn't know the, the background that was there. Uh, again, we are concerned as a, as a community about the vacancies, especially the ones I hear that are for Spanish, math, uh, and multiple science teachers at Woodrow Wilson. These are major concern and a two percent vacancy rate is, is, as of course, not acceptable when you look at the number of vacancies that are at Woodrow Wilson and were at the high schools last year. I, I will remind you that the Renaissance School reports that were due the first of August, um, to the, to the, uh, New Jersey State have not, to my knowledge, have been published on the public website, uh, for the state yet. And that information should be available to the public. Um, I made the district aware that it was not available and, uh, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. And also that would include the enrollment part that the district has versus the Renaissance School. I have not seen that been made public for some time, that even for last year. So, uh, uh, thank you for providing, uh, feedback on this. Appreciate that.
Mr. Sean Brown?
Good evening, everyone. I have to say the public is, uh, the public's on fire today, tonight. I never felt this much. Um, yeah, let's see, let's see what happens. So, uh, um, I, I want to first reiterate the point that Ms. Ragsdale elegantly made and Mr. Doctor, excuse me, Dr. Benson alluded to, just in terms of the gifted and talented program, um, I wasn't, I, I, I wasn't updated on that, um, for people in the district. And, um, I know that this is something that will be great. I know it's something that Miss Woodward and others have advocated for as well, and we look forward to having. Second point that was also made earlier that I want to, that I want to really, be really strong on is, I got to say, after what, four years? I don't know whose meeting, I can't tell whose meeting this is. So I don't know if this is the superintendent's meeting and the board members are sort of like guests and we still follow the Open Public Meetings Act, or this is a board meeting, uh, where the superintendent basically, you know, runs most of the meeting, uh, for his report to be read. But I'm going to talk to the board members just for a second. Ms. Wilson is a person that enjoys being in a position of power. Ms. Blackshear is more, and I, and I would say this even if she wasn't here, but Ms. Blackshear is more of, I'll take the position if it comes to me, I'll prey on it. But Ms. Wilson likes being president. You guys know her. My advice to you, Ms. Wilson, through the, through the, wherever the chair is in this meeting, is that if you like being president, then make these meetings board meetings. Ms. Ragsdale gave me great recommendation earlier of splitting the agenda between the superintendent's report, which is probably about eighty percent of what the public is concerned about, from, um, either the resolutions and other things, so that me talking isn't after Paymon has already approved everything that we come up here to comment. I don't mind even sure what the ti- what's the time period between when the pub, when the reports are made public, um, and when we have the chance to actually talk here at the microphone? As far as I can tell, that time period is about seventy-five minutes, right? So we had, we have about seventy-five minutes to go through about a hundred pages and, and if there's anything, um, contradictory or urgent or critical, you know, it, it seems, it may mean, I mean, you know, Paymon's a smart guy, so he can, he can change his mind after a change has been made. But the process by which we do this is, is I'm going to guess, even, you know, being that we're the only advi- this is the only district with both an advisory board and state-appointed superintendent, and we're already in a unique position. And then the way the agenda is set itself, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make sense for you as advisory board members. It doesn't make sense for us as a public. So, and, and this is not a criticism of Paymon, really the only person that makes sense for is the superintendent and, and therefore, and, and therefore his staff. Board, you need to reclaim your power. I understand you're going to tell me that silence does not equal ignorance or uncaring about the children. And I'm going to, I, I will support you with that. But one way to prove that is reclaiming these meetings as true board meetings and not as the superintendent's meetings. The last thing I want to say, completely different point, uh, really, really thinking back into what Vaidya said earlier about gang violence in the city, uh, I have a suggestion. Can we get our culture, our school culture and climate, school-based youth services, parents, coaches, uh, school support people, security in the room at the same time to talk about what one of my close friends described as the highest rate of gang affiliation in Camden and ever, ever. Bloods, Crips, whatever, I hear people say, oh, they're not really Bloods, they're not really Crips. Well, go tell them that because they don't believe that. Go see how many youngs they have. Go look at their social media, go look at their social media pages. Go, as, 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 as Vaidya said, Ali, Ali Smolell did, when, when you're a man, when you're a man and you try to face them face to face and say, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? Why are you involved in this? What can we do to support you? You don't hear a response of, yes, come help me. You hear a response of violence. So us decreasing suspensions, I believe, and Ms., I guess not even, because Felicia's not here, and Ms. Blackshear, but this is something I, I worked hard on when I was on the board and we, we, we lost time between that time and the takeover. The decrease of suspension is one of the most, I think, the most significant things we can do in our district to get away from having a punitive approach to, to issues with behavior. People talked about the, some of these events you go to, I was at a back-to-school event. Sometimes you see, it's not all, it's not even most, but you see how a few of the parents talk to their children, how quick they are to yell at them, curse at them, and hit them. These are the kids that are going to resent their, resent their mom, they, their dad might be locked up, and then they're going to go to the streets where they feel safety at first and they cau- get caught up in a, in a, in a very negative world that they'll never be able to get, get out of. Because I, the other, you know, because you know there's correlation between, I've never seen as many people in drug, excuse me, in gangs, I've also never seen as many drug addicts from the suburbs roaming the streets of Camden. In Ms. Wilson's neighborhood, in Ms. Burley's neighborhood, uh, I've, I've never seen it this much. I, I was on Broad, I was on, uh, Broadway and Kane the other day. I, I counted thirty people at one point in time roaming the streets to find drugs. This is not a metro issue, this is not a Moran or Redd issue, this is a community issue. And you as a board can come together and need to start with the conversation because I feel like not all of us are completely aware of where we are when it comes to gang affiliation, what the terms are, the, uh, how to identify it. You have some, some, some young people who've been in this room that are star athletes are also in gangs, what that means, the requirements that it puts on them. Some people that aren't in gangs, their closest friends are, so they're still really close to the issues themselves. We need to have a very serious conversation about this. We can, we know we cannot rely on in our city, we can't rely on certain folks. We haven't, what else is exposed to than not ultimately being an expert in Brother Mohammed? To his credit, I know of an incident happened a few weeks ago, this man was on the phone talking to people, talking people off the ledge, trying to create a reconciliation. I've probably never given Brother Mohammed, uh, a, a compliment here before, but, but it is, it is deserved. So anyway, I, I hope that we can come together on this issue, uh, and really make some significant differences. I think what, what, what Paymon talked about earlier is definitely, and thank you so much for letting me go over my time a little bit. I think what Paymon talked about earlier with the suspension rate is a huge and critical step, but it's not the only thing that needs to happen. So anyway, gain your power, board, and let's see what we can do about gangs. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Amir Khan?
Good evening. Okay, first of all, the, um, publicly congratulate Dr. Keith Benson for the president of, uh, the C E O. I'd also, um, probably in reference to what Vaidya was talking about and Sean just now, probably need to apologize because, you know, in, in defense of, um, superintendent and the board, um, we actually met a year ago about this with leaders to come together. Um, and actually you guys gave a date for something with drug violence and gang violence and, um, I think because of busyness, it kind of fell through the cracks. But I think myself and some of the other leaders, we will talk about that and follow back up with you on that, okay? Um, another piece, I just want to bring your attention. My cousin, Dr. Kamal Khan, he's a professor at Rutgers. He heads up the ESSA program. Um, and you might be aware of the program there, it actually stands for Office for Diversity and Academic Success in the Sciences. Some of you might be aware of the three doctors that are pretty famous who are going around the country dealing with, um, getting people into medicine. They came out of that program as well. He's the doctor, professor, my cousin up at Rutgers, New Brunswick. Actually started this program thirty-seven years ago. And what it is, is a pipeline from high schools directly into college of those getting, going into, uh, medicine. Uh, matter of fact, uh, Rutgers currently, Rutgers, New Brunswick, is the fourth, uh, largest college in the country that gets minority students into med schools, which is pretty amazing because the top three are schools like Howard and the Harry and, you know, typical historical black colleges and universities that specialize in that. The reason what makes this program so successful is because they have allotted funds to it, they've been doing it for about thirty-two years now, and they actually walk a person from the high school straight through, um, into med school. Let me just read this real quickly. The State University of New Jersey has identified the individuals that need the underrepresented and disadvantaged students in the sciences and aim to provide them with supplemental academic instruction, continual guidance, advising and finances. So even with MCAT, they even pay for things like that. So it's a great program. Uh, my cousins have been doing this for thirty-two years now as the director there and founder. And I'm just willing to come down and we'll bring him here to the board and, and to some of the schools. We already talked to some people over at BRIM and, um, but it's not just for BRIM and arts, it will be for all the high schools. So, uh, we're pretty excited about that. He already came down last year and spoke to some of the kids at Wiggins and just watching them in my wife's class, seventh graders, getting excited about medicine. You know, just their eyes opened up and they went and talked to their personal PCP about things and, and, and to follow up on that. So we're going to bring him down and let's see where that evolves too. But he's at the point of just giving back and wants to come specifically here to Camden. He's from Trinidad and my father brought him from Trinidad in his junior year of high school, came and lived with us. We graduated together and both went to Rutgers together. Um, if you give me thirty more seconds, let me just finish this up. So that will cover as far as that. You'll be meeting him and, and hopefully a lot will come out of Camden. Let's, um, do away with the pipeline of high school to prison and let's go high school to, uh, in this case Rutgers, we're becoming medical doctors. Um, lastly, we just want to introduce and, and mention again, this coming Wednesday is first day of school back. Um, we are doing, the back-to-school greeting is again, we have, uh, forty or so different nonprofits that are involved with that. We'll be at Camden High School, Hatch. You know, I, I finally started calling it Big Picture Learning now, Back to Hatch again, so I, I don't know. But anyway, we're going to be at Hatch again, uh, seven thirty on Wednesday morning, greeting with the kids and, um, we'll be again at Woodrow Wilson. And then several other schools have asked to participate as well. We said we have no problem supplying the resources, whether it's the donuts, the food, the roses and all that. But for those who are not aware, one, we invite everyone to come on out and greet this night. Yeah, I don't care if people can't stand each other. We come together because for the sake of the kids, it's for the kids. So we're there and people might be arguing Monday through Friday, but we get together on Wednesday at seven thirty, we're best friends and we show a unified friends and unified front because of what? The kids. The kids. So I invite everybody to come on out this Wednesday and other schools that are going to be possibly getting involved, let's greet the kids. For you that are not aware, we got silence and welcome back kings and queens, uh, make this a great year. And then all the girls get a beautiful rose and all the guys get a great big handshake and say, make it a fantastic year. Thank you very much. God bless you guys and see you soon.
Director Coolus Public, come in.
PCP is primary care condition.
Not wet.
It's not wet.
Just a few comments from me before I pass it over to our board president. On staffing, which I know Dr. Benson, Mr. Barfield, Ms. Ragsdale and others raised, we are more than happy to share our latest data by schools to sit down and pour over it. Uh, at this point, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our numbers are better than they've ever been at the start of the school year and that's going back several years. Uh, and where we need to continue hiring, we're very transparent about it. I know, Dr. Benson, you've spent a lot of time in our central office and I expect that to continue in terms of having those conversations. And so we should just sit down and look at the data together and square away what you're seeing inside of schools, conversations you're having with principals with what our team is working toward. I do want to just quickly remind everyone that in terms of staffing, I, I know often we get compared to other districts, the suburbs, and if you look at publicly available information, we have a lower student to staff ratio than just about every other district in the entire state. So for every five students, we have a staff member, whether a staff member is a school security officer, custodian, a teacher, elite educator, you name it. We are not short on people. I will also say, it never feels like you have enough. And so both things can be true when you look at the relative statistics and just the feeling of this is really hard work, we always need more folks inside of our buildings. And I know I speak to principals all the time, uh, who will tell you, yes, compared to other places, compared to years past, we fill out a clearly staff, geez, I could still use another X staff member, I could use another this or that. That's just kind of the reality of our work. We would love infinite resources. That would be really, really terrific. Uh, and so I just call that out because you have to strike a balance in terms of what your budget allows. And as a reminder again, our budget does allow us to staff very, very well relative to just about every other district in the state. Mr. Francis, to the violation of the meeting, uh, rules, thank you for bringing that to our attention. First time I heard that. Our folks are looking at it. We'll follow up with you directly. Um, so thank you for raising that to our attention. Uh, Ms. Ragsdale, you, you raised a lot of just kind of bigger ticket, what are we doing with curriculum this year? And I think that requires like a deeper dive. Let's sit down and, uh, have our, uh, school support team or our academics team walk you through that. I know, uh, Ms. McCombs would be happy to do it. She could also give you the similar gifted and talented update that we recently gave Mr. Brown. We're not yet at a place where there's like a bigger update to share to the public, but we will be able to do that soon. We actually just today had another meeting about this. And so it's, it's moving. I know it's not moving as fast as you all would like, but happy to, to, to give you that briefing as well. Uh, a couple of other things you raised, which I think once we sit down in person and kind of walk you through it all, I will just quickly say on the Puerto Rico trip. So I hear you that it may give the appearance of a boondoggle. The background is that it's really hard to find bilingual educators. And that's not a Camden challenge, that's a, that's a, hold on, let, oh, let me, let me, let me just finish the point. So what we've learned from districts that have had success filling their bilingual vacancies is they actually went to universities, uh, in Puerto Rico, in D R, and, uh, recruited those individuals from those universities, young college graduates to come move here, give them moving stipends. And so that was the idea. Uh, lo and behold, it actually, the trip never happened. And so just for whatever it's worth, the trip never happened. It was, and it was done in the past and there were some challenges. The, the Puerto Rican government is actually trying to keep their people, uh, because they've got their own educational challenges and so it had to do with some, something the government's doing to disallow recruiting at their universities. Um, Ms. Jocelyn on this, on the E S S F hate plan, well, all I can tell you is- Ms. Jocelyn, on this, on the ESSF hate plan, all I can tell you is we're working closely with the Commissioner and her team, the reality is with the federal government's budget, we actually don't know how things are going to play out, and so to this day, Title II A, for example, which pays for a lot of our professional development, we don't really know how much the Trump administration is going to cut that budget, and so it's hard to really have a plan, we don't know where the money's being allocated, but we're working really closely with the Commissioner's office there. To your point about the sale of our headquarters, so the public comments were kicked to the August board retreat, not many people showed up to that, I will say to the sale of our headquarters, not much has changed from last update I gave you all, which is, we intended to sell it, I guess the only update is there was one bid.
And it was below your minimum.
It was, we didn't, it was below the appraisal, it was below the appraisal, the appraisal, as I mentioned, probably came in higher than we expected, and so at this point, we don't have a closed deal, but there's one potential buyer, and we will keep you up to speed on how that plays out. The potential buyer, our understanding is that it would be a commercial development, it would be a commercial space opposed to residential centers.
Is that public information?
It's all public, happy to talk through it with anybody. Yeah, I don't know if we can, we can even show the number, right? Can we show that?
You can share one.
It was, it was published in the July of June.
Yeah, it's all, it's all public.
When it was adopted, as far as I know.
So, so there is a, there is a, there is a signed purchase agreement, which doesn't mean that, that it's done, it just means that there's one potential buyer who's now moving forward to the final stages, and, and happy to share any details that anybody would like to see on it, okay? So if you want to reach out to us after this meeting, set up time, we have one buyer with a signed purchase agreement as of late last month. On libraries, there are plenty of updates we can give on every building, I think the headline is, especially our comprehensive high schools, we made deeper investments, thank you for your advocacy, we, thanks to Mr. McCombs and her team, the Woodrow Wilson High School Library looks phenomenal, there's a lot of furniture, there's going to be staffing throughout the day, we don't have media specialists at the schools, and so we still think about staffing our libraries differently than say some other districts, although you know what we're doing is not necessarily unique, there are other districts that use our model as well, but we have made deeper investments in our, in our high school libraries especially, and we encourage you to come visit Woodrow Wilson, you'll probably hardly recognize the new library. On, I think you mentioned a quick thing about Rosedale, so that's the McGraw Pre-Kase site that's moved over to Rosedale, so I don't know if that was you or someone else.
No, that was me.
That was Mr. Barfield, that was you. Somebody mentioned it, I wrote it down. All right, I'm gonna end it there, I'm gonna see if Ms. Wilson or anyone else would like to comment.
Hey, gangs. What's up with the gangs?
What did you say, Mr. Brown?
The gangs.
Yeah, you didn't answer the question.
The question of gangs, I'm gonna, yeah, let's have Minister Wilson respond to that, we have made ourselves eligible to be a part of any community dialogue, community partnership, I appreciate Pastor Khan referencing the conversations we've had prior years, and we want, we want to ensure that our educators and our leaders in the district better understand the reality that plays out, and I appreciate the general sentiment, which is, there's a lot happening that we as adults aren't always aware of, and we need to ensure that we're taking the right approach with our kids, and that speaks to trauma-informed care, that speaks to restorative practices and the policies we have in place, but at the end of the day, it's about relationship with kids. And so there are many people who are far closer to our children than I am, and that's the reality of my job, I'm in, I'm in the central office a lot, when I'm at community meetings, I'm still several degrees removed from those relationships that change lives, and that's, that's the work that we all do here, which is to create the conditions so that our adults build those relationships with kids, to put them on a different life trajectory, and we know that it's really hard work, and there are certain challenges that we're not always aware of, and we lean on you all to help us address those challenges, and so whatever forum folks want to build, whatever partnerships you want to create, you know how to get ahold of us.
You know, I come in here and some of the things that I say, y'all may not accept, but when I said they're gonna be dead, and I see three to four hundred of our children, and the Bloods have on their red hats and chips, their red hats, and you have to know that certain ones of these football and basketball teams, they used to represent their group, like the Pirates, not the Pirates, the Patriots, the Patriots be, mean the Bloods, see, in fact, I could spend a whole summer with them, I know it different. So when you see three to four hundred students, and some of our students have been implicated in murders, in murders, Gabby wasn't enough, I don't want to hear nothing about no car and shit, I want you to take some money out of your budget and create a task force to deal with this problem. Our children are dying in the streets, it's a problem. I said they're gonna be dead and cry, packed my stuff and left, you know what, I didn't want to die, they jumped three people at one clock, and then they turn around and jump people at four o'clock, and they told the adults, we will kill you, that's a problem. That's a problem in our community. And these children attend our public schools, our charter schools, our Renaissance schools, they don't discriminate, they attend schools in Camden, and I think it needs to be a conversation and dialogue with a coalition built with all of the schools, not coming out of our budget, let them spend some of their money, we need representation on these charter schools, community representation. These folks come from here, don't know what's best for our children. I'll tell you right now, we went to one board meeting, and they had a phone, the board meeting is over telephone, a conference call, we don't know if the people were marshmending or you mess. Another board meeting we went to, at Uncommon, they tried to convince us that they don't have done programs that's working for our children, but anytime you jump a kid, and they must wear black shoes to school, and the parent might not have money for black shoes, and you take electrical duct tape and tape shoes up for the kids, what is it about? Educational shoes. We need to have these, a dialogue with every last one of these charter, Renaissance schools, form a coalition citywide, have the mayor on the dialogue, the free holders, since they take over our city, their county, put the county on it, same for family services, all them billions of dollars they got, it's time they put their money to use, where is our mall grant, that worked with our children, that had problems in the community, with their conjunction with the school district? Where are our grants and our services for our children? But, I tell you what we noticed, all the support services that we had, they're in charter and Renaissance schools.
That's right.
That's a problem.
That's right.
That's a problem.
Thank you, Vaida, we're going to ask Minister Yacine, wanting to speak to some institutions dealing with the gangs.
Thank you.
All right, um, I just, before you go, there was a couple of questions that Dr. Benson didn't answer, there was after-school programs that were going to be offered, some schools were going to be after, going to after-school program, also for the annual state reports, which is available, so it could be released inside, because I opened that information, so if you could please put that on the website, and also swing space funding, what was that a lot for, those were the three questions that I asked.
I just want to say one thing, so a lot of yous don't know, but Mr. Yacine and I made comments of our disagreements this year, and I would like to work with Minister Yacine on this coalition, citywide, for these youths, because I realize that most of these children have lack of services, lack of love, and lack of homes.
There must be a God somewhere.
You hear me? And all of them need is just a little bit of love.
I agree.
A little bit of love.
Mr. Yacine.
Go ahead, Vaida. Thank you very much. As a president, and community, I want to first, first of all, on your issue about money, we do need more money and resources to help with the gang prevention, so I'm not, you know, definitely not going to speak out in opposition to that, of what we can do, because that is the driving force. Of course, most of you know that I represent Cure for Camden here in Camden, and I know we're going to move forward, but for four years, we've been out there working the Cure for Camden program, I really see very little representation here in this room of people who supported us, and the young men and women that we have working in the streets on the daily course. Now, this is me just speaking to the community about what I think some of the issues are. I think some of the issues from the community point of view is that we have a lot of people in the community that are, and I, are passionate about what goes on in our community, with our young people, with the crime, with the violence, but the fractionalism that's going on between the Bloods, the Crips, the Nieters, and any other different groups, the same kind of fractionalism is going on with groups that can actually give them help. Here's one of the reasons why I advocate Cure for Camden, is the fact is, as we're here talking to the district school, because the school district and Payman Rahanafer and the staff represent the state and government's money that the law provides us to have a proper education to our children, so it is with Cure for Camden. Cure for Camden was an initiative done by the mayor's office, working in conjunction with the National Youth Forum, that works in conjunction with the Board of Education, and the lead organization is the Center for Family Services. The reason why Muhammad's Temple got on board is because Cure for Camden had the resources necessary to work many of the programs or ideas that a lot of us have in the community, but it seems many of us want to do ceremonial dog and pony shows sometimes for one day, which are great, but if we don't work with a lead organization that have the resources that can hire people, some of us who are passionate about crime and the young people with gangs, don't have the resources and lacking the funding to stay out on the streets all the time that we have young men and women on the streets who are credible messengers, who are hired people from the community, but yet, when we make the call, and you all look on my Facebook page, you can go on the social network and see, for three years, we have went to every corner, we have went to every shooting, and have supported many of you all's programs that you have had about anti-violence, but yet, some of us, as we're going to move forward, in four years, we have not seen you at any of our monthly rallies that we have. If you learn more about Cure for Camden under the National Youth Forum, it's all about, I guarantee you, that is made such that your organization, we're not telling you to put down your organization, we're asking you to come join with us who have the initial funding in the city. The funding is going into another phase, and we're looking for other organizations to work with in the city to expand what we're doing in certain target neighborhoods, and sometimes the fractionalism that goes on among the adults in the religious community, it trickles down to our young people, and I did get a call, Vaida, from Ali Salonel about that day, what happened Sunday, and we did send our men out there, we've been out there practically all week, because we responded, it was just a shooting there, and that problem in the Centerville section of Camden, that gang problem, is serious. Okay, it's not, but we're talking about where we were at, where we got the phone call at, that I'm talking specifically, I know it's all over Camden with our schools, and that's why when you're advocating for more funding of what people can do, I'm with you on that, of what organizations, the lead organizations in the city, whether it's Renaissance, public, charter, private schools, I think we all need to get on board, so I'm asking you all, as I've been asking for four years, join on to the movement. We haven't just been there statistically speaking, if I may, the young men and women have what is called their outreach workers, they work out, this is their job, their profession, and we feel good about hiring people from the street who come from that background, that lifestyle, that they're called credible messengers, that we take them through a vigorous training, because they have the training to deal with the conflicts, and to me personally, those conflicts coincide with what we have been doing in the Nation of Islam for years, since I was a child, and dealing with the conflicts and the people in the street, but I'm asking you in the community to get involved, the business community, let's not get into who's involved in it, if you angry that I'm involved in it, I'll move to the side, if that pleases you, because I believe our children are more important, but get involved, let's deal with the lead organization in the city, because whether we like it or not, Center for Family Services is that organization, that have the background, that have the services, that the money comes through, we have to do, we can't beat and fight them up and beat them up because they have the money, we have to, we need the money to trickle down in the community and the street, but if we get involved, we can do more. So that is a serious problem, the mall program, I've been running that mall program for the past three years, and the mall program, the mall program is adjudicated through the court system, and it's the children who are appointed by the judges come to us, we don't pick, even though I have and we have taken children that parents have dropped off, and we deal with them, but this has been working, but because many of us seems to be public enemy number one, and thank you, Mr. Brown, that I did get a compliment in four years, okay? Because we seem to be public enemy number one, yes, ma'am.
No, no, no disrespect to you, no disrespect to you, I started off by holiday.
Yes, we know why.
I'm not going to make this progress, I'm going to say to you, there's something called preventative measures, now I understand what you're saying, for Center for Family Services, the Cure for Camden is doing, but once them children reach that point where you have to get with the Cure for, Cure for, uh, whatever, they're already hit, we need preventative measures in our school district.
Yes.
In our school district, we don't, we don't need, I'm not putting aside.
Sister Vaida, I wouldn't disagree with you, can I say this, for the lack of time in the public, I wouldn't disagree with you more than a hundred percent of more services that we need, me and you on the same page on that, there is preventative measures, measures at Cure for Camden, that's why I'm asking you to reach out to us, because a lot of people in the community haven't reached out, I'm offering for people to reach out, and of course, Vaida, the love losses never, have never been lost, and we make it publicly in the community, Vaida and I is working together in Camden City, to get Camden City on the right track, and I will work with anyone, I've complimented and worked with you all, but for the sake of time, I'm asking you, reach out to us, the Cure for Camden, anybody in any neighborhood where we've been at, heard my voice, and hear my voice for four years, please, reach out to us, there's so much to Cure for Camden that I think the public is not aware of, because most of our public campaign is, has just been to get credibility among the streets, see, these are things that the people in the streets do, that when we first came out, okay, first they're snitches, we had to beat that down first, came from many of the people in the program, some of you know exactly what I'm talking about, and this is why they chose someone like us in the Nation of Islam, because we can take that tyranny of what the public can say, even though it may be wrong as two left shoes, that we're snitches and working with the police department, so we got through that. Now, the program is working, the gentlemen are doing a fine job with what they have, what we need now is more of you in the community to get involved, keep pushing the envelope, I won't say stop the envelope, keep pushing the envelope for more funding.
So I'm going to say, we'll end on that note, but I am, I'm listening to what I'm hearing this evening, and I hear Superintendent say, okay, if you want to talk to me, then get back to me, and I'm hearing that, that's a, that's a group, that's a large number of areas that we're talking about individually, we've got to stop talking individually, and we've got to come together, and we've got to work together unitedly in this community, whether it's through a town hall meeting, it's going to take not just the Board of Education, as we all know, we've been through this before, so give us the time to pull something together with the Superintendent, the mayor's office, chief of police, Minister Yacine, the Cure for Camden, and we're going to also make sure that we have parents and people from the community as a part of that, and we need to have our students a part of it, that is one of the major areas that keeps getting left out of the things that we're doing, and those are things that we've done in the past, we know that it works, so sometimes we just have to stop, because where we are, we're just treading water. Some of us feel like we were moving in a d- Some of us feel like we were moving in a direction and everything came to a halt. And then we've had four years, that changes have been made. But now, some of those changes that Superintendent Rahanaford wants to make, comes back to things that we were doing before he got here. So what it means is, is okay, we've given him the time and the opportunity, and he's open to and willing to working with us. It's even with community knowing what's going on in this district. As a board, we had committees. Those weren't, they were on paper, but it really wasn't happening. And that's not always the superintendent and his staff's fault, because you only have certain board members that's going to come out to those community, those, those committee meetings. So that's not doing them any good either. So I just said to them tonight in closed session about there's going to be some changes, there's going to be committee meetings, it's their responsibility to attend those committee meetings. It's also their responsibility to go and take training in the state of New Jersey, so that they know what the roles and their responsibilities are, and know what the law calls for. You can't sit here without taking those classes and know what's happening. If you listen, did you hear what Ms. Ragdell said? She spoke about the situation, and then she called off the state statute for it. That's how this board should be functioning. And unless we function that way, we can't help the superintendent. And he can't help us. So it's all of our responsibility, not just those here who come to work, because they're coming here. I can tell you, if you work in the city of Camden, it's just not about a paycheck. When you come into this city, it's about the children, and the people want to work with our children. There's nothing about our children why they can't learn, because they can. That's why the Gifted and Talented Program must get put back in order as soon as possible. When we had the CHIPS program, we were proud. When we had, when medical arts was in the forefront, we was proud. Creative arts, we were proud. We now have got to build backup, the very things that we worked together to put in place, whether it was working with the Commissioner of Education and the state, or if it was working on a federal level. But I believe that we're all here for the same cause, and that should be our children. But the one thing about it is, is we have to include the parents and the community in that. And you're not feeling it, so I understand. So I'm going to ask you to give us the opportunity to pull those things together, and before, by October, give us the opportunity to put those things in place, because there should be a town hall meeting. The things that we were doing, people don't see what's going on Channel 19 like you used to see before. They don't know what's going on in the community. And when that's not happening, things will begin to rise up. And that's the last thing that we need to do. Because besides of what's going on right now, we're about to go through another election. And if we're not unified in what we do, we can't afford what we've seen once before. We can't let that happen. Leaders can't make that happen. That's not going to be. So we all have to rise up. We all have to step up. It's not easy, but when we say love is universal, that's the one thing I can say. I can walk in through here, and I can look at each one of you, and I see you, I can gra, I can meet you and greet you with a hug and a kiss, because that's where I come from. And I'm going to look at the best in you, not the negative. I saw you, Mr. Brown, I got that. So we have to begin to do that on behalf of our children in the city of Camden. And then the State Department will begin to say, they're coming together and reunified. The one thing that they can say in Trenton is that everybody else comes together and they're fighting on behalf of, in the city of Camden, the mayor asked, when this board was put together, that we work together in leadership with our superintendent. So they're not seeing us arguing and fighting like they did, because we used to go to Trenton and we were part of as that parent group. I still believe we have that. There's been so many fractions, even amongst the parents within this city. Why? Because when you can divide them, and you don't make them stand together, we can all fall. So the reality of it is, on behalf of all children in the city of Camden, and everybody else who is here on their behalf, and our responsibilities, it's time for us to put action where it's supposed to be. And that's our responsibility. So on that note, I'm going to say that we pray for those who are going through in Texas, Louisiana, all of those areas that's been hit by this hurricane. I'm going to say to you, that could very well hit us, because the water that comes down, it will weaken the strength of your city. You're, you, you see streets concaving without a lot of water, not only in the city of Camden, but throughout this country. So don't think that what's going on out west can happen here to us. We could have our own situations at any given day. So I pray for you, I pray for our children, I pray for our superintendent, I pray for our parents, because our parents are the ones who have to make the decisions on behalf of our children. And those children you're talking about who are out there now, they didn't get what they needed. For whatever reason, they didn't get what they needed. And so it used to be, if a man addressed the man, young man, they have respect for that. There's no respect for individuals or for human beings anymore. And that's our responsibility, civility. And on that note, I'm going to say thank you all for being here this evening. I look forward to meeting you when we come into your schools on the first day of school. And thank you again for being here to work with us on behalf of our children in the city of Camden.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it. All right, I'm going to take roll.
Honeymoon.
I want to take roll.
Family.
Ms. Teresa Atwood. Uh, Jose Brito Bueno. Ms. Dorothy Burley. Taisa Minier. Ms. Muhammad. Police Williams Morton. Ms. Catherine Wilson. Ms. Mark Wilson. And Ms. Catherine Black. We are now adjourned.